Councilmember Beckmeyer. The record will reflect that Councilmember Beckmeyer is absent. Mayor Proton Martin?
Here.
Mayor Vatterlaus?
Here. And now we will do the salute to the flag led by Councilmember Beer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you. So our next item is a special presentation with a proclamation for Amateur Radio Week. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Coastside Amateur Radio Club and its affiliated amateur radio emergency service and the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service have been and are prepared to provide emergency communication service to the residents of Pacifica. And whereas the amateur radio fraternity has made many contributions to the development of electronic commut- communications. And whereas the amateur radio relay league is a national organization representing the amateur radio fraternity. And whereas the amateur radio fraternity annually during the fourth weekend in June demonstrates its capability of setting up and operating its equipment under emergency conditions. And whereas the Coastside Amateur Radio Club holds this demonstration in Pacifica on Sweeney Ridge at the San Francisco Bay Discovery Site. Now therefore, I, Sue Vatterlaus, Mayor of Pacifica, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through June 23rd, 2019, Amateur Radio Week in the city of Pacifica in honor of the members of the Coast Radio Week in the city of Pacifica.
That gives us some points on our setup there. But when we set up there, we usually have 50 or 60 people or more sign in and we try to explain them, we're doing something that's kind of odd on the top of the hill for our pleasure, but it shows what we can do. And they have been invited in and numbers of them have actually operated some of our radios and got to see what amateur radio can do. And also within this community, of course, we have the CERT branch, Breck Hitz and the CERT branch. And because of those activities, there's a lot of people in the CERT community now that are getting into amateur radio. So we're doing the best we can in Pacifica to get people ready. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like a picture?
Okay. Always get a picture. There's always a question. Everyone will.
Oh, come on. Mary?
Thank you so much. You know, I think it's really important for our community to understand, like, all the things that are going on in the background to keep people safe. And this is one of those. And I, I'm like proud to sit on the Emergency Preparedness Committee with you. I'm learning from you and I thank you.
Thanks Frank. You keep it alive here in Pacifica. And you know, for those that aren't aware, CERT is Community Emergency Response Team. And in the event of an emergency, a lot of our cell phones won't work, maybe even our landlines. And that's what, what Frank and his team does is make sure that we are able to communicate with other areas of the county and, and the continent. So thanks for making sure that it happens.
Good job Frank. I've told the story before, when I've been up there and it's so foggy, you can't see your hand in front of your face. So, good work.
Thank you very much for all that you do. And we really will need you someday and we're thankful that you're there.
Yeah, and thank you very much and I appreciate this. All we can do is to do the best we can and Pacifica, as far as I am concerned, is rah rah on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're moving to the consent. Is there anyone who would like to remove something from the consent calendar? I have yellow cards coming. So from the audience, we have number three and number five being pulled from the consent calendar. Do, does anyone on council want to remove anything from consent? Okay.
I move the consent calendar except for items three and, and five.
Second, is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes four to one with one, four to nothing with one absent. Okay. Bridget Duffy, item number three.
Hello, Bridget Duffy. Not hello, Bridget Duffy, hello, I am Bridget Duffy. Anyway, it's nice to see everybody. I noticed that this says you're going to declare a local emergency from the coastline. And on one hand, I would applaud the measure, you know, but I know that it's only so that you can build a $200 million seawall. And so, to me, as an environmentalist, at a time when we know that the latest UN report to come out says, if we don't reduce carbon emissions by, within 12 years, and this is the United Nations talking, not me, if we don't lower carbon emissions drastically within 12 years, they are predicting climate breakdown that could very much so end human existence within the next 100 years. Now, it's hard for me to understand how any human being living on planet Earth wouldn't take this very seriously. And the idea that the city might endeavor, and I assure you, I will throw myself in the way if I have to, to spend 200 or any kind of million, to be honest with you, I don't care if it's 100 million, 1 million, 2 million, 3 million, 300 million, no millions of dollars should be spent of taxpayer money right now that isn't going to lower our carbon emissions and take us into a green future. Because it is, in fact, the only future we have. And this is serious and it's time to stop playing politics with, with this. This, I understand that this is, you know, supposed to be the new downtown. That was a design made in the 90s, okay? Before we had the new information about the climate. And that ocean out there is looking more and more like it is going to rise to levels unprecedented. And we do not know what that means. We can pretty much guarantee that no matter what wall you build outside, it is not going to keep the ocean at bay or the cliffs from eroding. We need to take all our resources and put it into things that will get us out of the mess that we're in with the carbon pollution, which dot, 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 will continue in a minute. Maybe I shouldn't even sit down because it's number five. Done for that.
Thank you. Bridget, number five.
Which leads me to my latest, well, it's not my latest, you're going to get the latest later. But this is about the climate, global climate warming and what we can do. I've learned a great deal in the last couple of weeks going to different seminars and whatnot up in Sacramento. As it turns out, gas-powered lawn equipment is creating the same amount of air pollution as cars are in California. And it's set, this is about maintenance, right?
About plants.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
This is, what was I saying? Hold on.
Gas-powered lawn equipment.
Okay, so that, yes, gas-powered lawn equipment is set to be even more air polluting next year than cars. So this is something that we can address very easily. 30% of all gas emissions come from domestic land use. Pacifica is always allocating money, this is what you're doing right now, but what I'm saying is, any money spent and any plan for agriculture or greenery within the confines of Pacifica should absolutely be looked at from a new angle. Leaving our fields full of wildflowers will help the bees and the butterflies, which are going extinct. The gas-powered lawn equipment is actually causing pollution. If we switched to gas-powered lawn equipment just in Pacifica that was powered by solar, I mean, if we could do it for the whole state, it would halve the emissions in California overnight. So these are the kinds of things we can do. And I implore you, please, please do something innovative and different. Because the truth is, is if we keep doing all the things we've been doing for the past decades, that is what's causing the problem. So to continue to do what we have been doing is nothing short of annihilation. We have to do something differently. And these types of measures with, with our greenery, just looking at that differently, just taking that in hand and doing something positive about it could make a tremendous difference. And we could lead other cities if we come up with a good plan. And I think if anybody could come up with a good plan, Pacifica could come up with a good plan. The coast, the Beach Coalition themselves has an army of volunteers. They, they know the native plants from the not-native plants. I've already talked to the power, the, the City Works Department with some of my ideas about, instead of mowing everything down, let's use some skills and get rid of what we don't want but keep what we do want. Let's, let's look at a, at a different way to approach our open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there a motion to accept items three and five?
I'll make a motion to accept items three and five.
It's the second?
Well, second.
Please vote. And that, that passes four to one, one being absent. Four to nothing with one being absent. Thank you. Okay. Onto oral communications. Guess what? Bridget Duffy.
So yesterday, my sister, who is 70 years old, in frail health, she's the widow of a WWII veteran who was a Native American man who actually was permanently blinded in his service to the country in WWII. She was evicted from her apartment and there is no place for people to go. There's no place. There's no shelters, there's no subsidies, there's no motel vouchers, there's zero help for people. This is indeed an emergency and a moratorium on eviction is long overdue. As a matter of fact, I started coming in here four years ago. And that's what I was saying, my mother had just gotten an eviction notice and an $800 rent increase. And my not-a-boyfriend just got an eviction notice and an $800 rent increase. And I was horrified at the thought of my mother being evicted. So far, she hasn't actually gotten evicted, but my not-a-boyfriend had to leave the area. He was an entrepreneur, he had started his own business, he was doing very well. Young person trying to make it in the Bay Area and actually being successful. But being residentially challenged literally has destroyed his health and he had to leave the Bay Area. So every day, our communities are being deprived of young, energetic, intelligent, capable people, which our society definitely thrives on. Because the government, and this is, this is what's in my new one, the United Nations issued a report about the homelessness in the Bay Area and said it was a human rights violation that had more to do with failed political policies than an actual shortage of housing. So, so, so the United Nations and the whole world is looking at the Bay Area, one of the most wealthy places on the face of the earth, and going, why? How? How is this happening in America? My, my sister not only was the widow of a WWII vet, my father served in two wars, he spent two years at the CC camps making roads for the United States of America for pretty much nothing. I mean, my brother is living in a van. My sister is now hotel-to-hotel. My mother's been living under eviction for four years. Why? Because we're renters. Is it because we didn't contribute to this community? No, we've been contributing members of this community for 40 years. We've paid taxes for 40 years. We should not be dismissed. This is a crisis. Please help us.
Thank you. Ken Miles?
Good evening Mayor and other council people. Ken Miles, 111 Natagua in Valimar. The reason why I'm speaking tonight is I hope, I should have came here a month ago when contractors from PG&E were cutting down three palm trees in Valimar. And these are probably 100-year-old heritage trees. Nobody got a notice in the Valimar area about this. And we all moved in the area, at least most of us, moved into Valimar because we love the beauty of the, of the trees that line Rena del Mar. I know now there are a lot of fire hazards and PG&Es being more than proactive, taking down the limbs and things like that. But what they've done was crowned, I talked to Aaron Clark, the public health guy, the public works person. And he said that what they did about six months ago prior to this was they crowned the trees, they took out the heart of the thing and it killed the palms. And the palms are dead in about six months. Then they had to cut them down right to the roots. No way of saving them or doing anything like that. This morning, I was on my way to the county fair to represent the museum people and the county museum. And I noticed that the same contractors are out there at the Y at the bottom of the creek with tearing, preparing to cut down some more trees. Now, they can't keep on doing this. PG&E really needs to, to let us know in advance what they're going to do and help us select, if not pay for the trees that they're taking out. These trees are here a lot longer than PG&E was here. And they're really taking away from the pride and the joy of all Pacificans when they do that. So please, can you work with your city manager, who I've talked to about this already, as well as the Public Works Department, to get some kind of a contract with PG&E so they can at least work for us and not against us? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other yellow cards for oral communications, we will move on to the public hearings. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we won't. Council Communications. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. So after all the graduations and the transitions that happen at the end of the school year, I took a break. And so the past couple of weeks, I've been resting and I have not attended any city events. That's not going to happen all the time, but I really needed the break and, anyway, so that's part of my report. So I'm going to use my time tonight to talk about the Pacifica Resource Center. Hearing that there's no services or no help for anyone, I really want to kind of change that narrative and talk about the kind of help that there is. I also recently received a large rent increase and I went into the Pacifica Resource Center to access services. And what happened to me there was that they gave me financial coaching. So we went through my whole budget, we looked what was coming in, what was going out, so that when it was time for me to move, I knew exactly what I had to deal with. And that was very helpful for me. And they call it financial health, which I had never thought of it that way. The reason why I'm talking about this is because I really want people to be able to access services in any way that they can. And so the Pacifica Resource Center is the place to do that. Also, there is the unhoused in Pacifica Task Force. Their applications are due on this Friday. Please apply. You know, we've had a lot of people who have been sending us emails, talking about the people who are vehiculally housed and what we can do about them and how, you know, people complain a lot about it. So what I would like to see is people be part of the solution. So if you want to be part of the solution, please apply to be on the task force. It's really important that we have representation from all over our community. Thank you.
Deirdre?
We had our beach cleanup this past Saturday at Sharp Park here. And while I am a site captain, a lot of my city functions have kept me away from there and family functions. So I was there this Saturday and it was also World Oceans Day, so it was a perfect day and it was so beautiful. And we had, we had a bunch of great help and a bunch of people showed up and a lot of kids. And I think we collected about 25 pounds of trash, a couple thousand cigarette butts, which is unfortunate, but we saved them from the ocean, so that's good. The Pacific Beach Coalition has their monthly meeting tomorrow night at Sharp Park Library at 6:00 PM. Everyone's invited. If you want to hear a little bit more about it, come on out. And I also attended the San Mateo County Climate Ready Collaborative convening. This is their fourth meeting. And this one was called Turning the Tide, Connecting for Resiliency, and it was all about sea level rise. And Pacifica was talked about a lot. I keep saying this and I keep saying that and I keep saying this, but we are, we're hot and people are looking at us for, to see what we're doing. And I want to thank our city staff, Planning Director Wermeyerster and Bonnie O'Connor and Ryan Marquez for helping to put together the presentation. And I gave about five minutes on what we're doing. We, they had USGS there giving talk on what's going on. And the nice thing is that they had a bunch of different people talk about their adaptation maps and they're all very consistent. And that's nice. And one of them I was really excited about was the Estuary Group, and I can't remember the actual name, but it's nice to see that when we're talking about all this doom and gloom, there's a group out there that's saying, yes, 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 but look what we could do with this, with these areas that, that will be inundated at some point. So I was happy to hear that. And the whole idea around this climate collaborative is that we talk about doom and gloom, but we talk about them with the idea of hope in a collaborative environment. And so we got to hear about what other, what other cities are doing in the county. And the airport was there and there's just representation all, all up and down the county. So that was really interesting. The next one's going to be on rising temperatures and all the issues that come, today's a perfect day to be talking about it, rising temperatures. We saw almost 100 here in Pacifica. And how do we prepare for some of those things? Some, some cities are actually responsible for and should be probably helping out those, those community members that need it the most. San Francisco, for instance, has a lot of people on dialysis that will die when they do have these scheduled brownouts. So just stuff to think about. And I would just say, if you're interested in that, go to San Mateo County's website and you can get an invite for those things. It's, it's really open invitation to people who are interested. And so I encourage you to do that. And that's all I have.
Mike?
First off, I just wanted to say, this is the first meeting, I think, since we put heat in this building that I discovered there's air conditioning in this building too. So thank you to Public Works for getting this air conditioning today. Everybody out there looks nice and happy and cool, so thank you. I attended the Council-City Dinner along with Sue Vatterlaus. We also attended PCT Honors, which is the Pacific Coast TV's honor of different citizens that have done different things. And the Pacificans that were honored were Gail Benton Schumacher for founding the Pacifica School Volunteers, Chasta and Jane Michaelis for finding the Green Music Room there on Crespe. Also for Mitch and Christie Stoltz, who are from the church on Terranova, for their outreach and for homeless and helping those less, less able to help themselves. And also Armando Sanchez. And Armando Sanchez, although he's really behind-the-scenes guy, he is head of heart here in San Mateo County. And he has helped the Pacifica School District with over $2 million loan for their workforce project. He also was behind providing a loan and funding for the remodel of the senior housing across from the community center for a bridge to take out and do the remodels. So he doesn't live in Pacifica, but he did have an impact on Pacifica for that, you know, for some of those, for the affordable housing. I also attended the Airport Roundtable, which is always a joy. And, you know, it's a learning curve. This was my third meeting and it was just kind of interesting, like the FAA comes up with this slide and they said, and these are the flights from SFO going down the peninsula. So I said, is that all the flights? And they said, no, this is only the people flights. I said, where are the rest? And they said, well, that's not the question you asked. So you have to be very precise with the FAA. And it comes to find out that the city of Woodside has a written formal agreement, measure, memorandum of understanding that they will not fly less than 8,000 feet above Woodside. While in Pacifica and North County, there is no such understanding. And if they do give a flight that the flight is, you know, like 4,000 feet up or So he doesn't live in Pacifica, but he does have an impact on Pacifica for that, you know, for some of those, for the affordable housing. I also attended the Airport Roundtable, which is always a joy. And, you know, it's a learning curve. This was my third meeting, and it was just kind of interesting. Like, the FAA comes up with this slide, and they said, and these are the flights from SFO going down the peninsula. So I said, is that all the flights? And they said, no, this is only the people flights. I said, where are the rest? And they said, well, that's not the question you asked. So you have to be very precise with the FAA. And it comes to find out that the city of Woodside has a written formal agreement, measure, memorandum of understanding, that they will not fly less than 8,000 feet above Woodside. While in Pacifica and North County, there is no such understanding. And if they do give a flight, that the flight is, you know, like 4,000 feet up or whatever, that's from sea level. So actually, if you are up at the top of Skyline, or you are in, you know, somewhere in Pacifica on a hill, or like some of the people there on San Bruno Mountain, you might only be 2,000 feet away from this plane flying, which seemed to be a revelation to our South County people, who never understood why North County was so upset about the flights, is when they suddenly discovered some people only 2,000 feet above a plane. They actually, Mayor Brisbane actually came to a meeting once and said he waved at the passengers along Skyline that was so low. Okay? So it is a big learning curve at the Airport Roundtable. And I don't want to get into the whole big details of what they're, but we are, I actually had five or six people come up to me and say, thank you for asking questions that nobody's asked before, such as quit using acronyms and tell us what these things mean. One of the things they have was some flight program called Pirate. And I said to them, well, the only pirates I know have eye patches and swords. And they had a 15-minute explanation of what Pirate was, because nobody else in the room knew what it was, including me. It was my third meeting. So anyhow, there's probably more to come with that and more frustrations from the FAA. But I am making an effort. I've been dealing with some other North County cities, and we are going to be trying to form a departure group, just like there's an arrival group, South County. We're going to try to get a departure group, North County. So anyhow, that's my report from the Airport Roundtable. We, I also, this morning, attended the Library JPA. And we passed the annual, oh, yeah, which is, the Library Joint Powers Agreement, which runs all the, most of the libraries on the peninsula. So anyhow, we passed the annual budget, and that was the big news from there.
Thanks. I actually got a call thanking, telling me to thank Mike for having them explain all the acronyms, because I'm big on that, too. I really don't like acronyms at all, and she was very thankful. Don't ask me why she called me instead of him, but that's okay. I also went to Council of Cities, and the speaker was from SFO, and explained the number of people that they're increasing is amazing, the number. And I asked, not this time, but the time before, well, how are you increasing the numbers but not increasing flights? And they said, oh, we're just going to larger airplanes. So to me, larger airplanes is more noise. They don't think so. I do. Also, something interesting, they are no longer going to have any plastic bottles sold in the airport as of July of 2019, but they're going to let them use their supplies. But by January of 2020, there will be no longer any plastic bottles sold in the airport. That'll be interesting. I went to Cops and Kids. Cops and Kids, they had demonstrations. The helicopter came in. They had dogs. They had CPR. Were so happy. That's, I just saw happy kids everywhere. I liked all the cars. Somebody brought a Corvette police car. I was impressed. I went to the Association of Area Governments, which was in Oakland, and mainly, we voted on their budget, but we had a housing panel after, after our vote, which is pretty much what we discuss all the time, housing. I also went to Pacific Coast TV Honors, and I was happy to see all the people who got the awards there. It was quite a nice event held at Sanchez, at Mildred Owen Concert Hall. And I went to the county fair so I could see the animals that the kids from the Pacifica 4-H enter. There were sheep, cows, rabbits, all kinds of pigs. It's amazing that these are coming out of Pacifica, and it really does teach the kids a lot. They learn about how to, I mean, you think Pacifica, oh, they're not going to have cows and pigs and goats, and we really do have all those things. So it was, it's a great program.
Okay.
Mike?
Yeah. And just kind of put a plug in for 4-H, is apparently there was some sort of, like, bird thing going around where they couldn't bring their birds to the county fair. But the kids are still trying to sell their turkeys and stuff. So it can, you can go to the city website and email me, and I'll put you in touch with the lady who will be able to get you a turkey and stuff. But Sue mentioning the airport, this was a couple of issues, and one of which the city attorney is going to want to be mindful of, is at the Council of Cities Dinner, the guy said that by, was it 20, 30, 20, 25, they are figuring they are going to have 15 million more passengers through San Francisco Airport, and that they are going to have to be doing an EIR. And I asked the question, will that EIR have to include the traffic along Highway 101 and 380, because, you know, I would think we'd need more BART cars, et cetera? And he said he didn't think the FAA had to do an EIR for 15 million more people, which is what, 15 San Franciscos over a year? They also are getting new sound monitors, which will be able to start measuring sound both at low level and high levels. But they are going to try to put, they want to put them in the same spots the existing ones are. And there was a lot of chat and talk about you need to move them because the sound patterns have changed from where they are when you first put the others in there 20 years ago. And there's one in Pacifica, they won't give me the actual address because it's on private property. It's at the north end, and I think somewhere around Hickey. So, but we are going to be doing battle. And if I get a name of someone that you can email, I will post it on Nextdoor, saying that we need to change, we need to analyze and see where the sound monitors are at the different cities. And there were several cities that had the same issue we did. So I'm going to try to get more information on that, and then I'll post it on Nextdoor and maybe put it in the Connect Pacifica. And they are going to be doing some changes with the additional 15 million people, where there may be an opportunity for the city to file grievance, or whatever it's called, comments about the changes. So I'm going to talk to the city attorney about the windows for those different events. So you made me remember that. Thanks.
It's okay. So, and they're building a giant hotel there that's more traffic. It's amazing the amount of people that go through the airport. It's just amazing. So, and they, and the expense, and they're moving all of the, the number of Ubers and Lifts that go in, they're moving all of them into one area. So it'll be totally different if you take an Uber and a Lyft there, sort of like when you go into Las Vegas, you have to go to a totally separate terminal, and all the Ubers and Lifts will come there. So it might ease up some of the actual traffic of people arriving and departing, being dropped off. So.
Thirty percent of their traffic is Uber and Lyft now.
Huge percentage.
But they're tearing down the garage where they're sending Uber and Lyft.
They're going to tear it down now, but there'll be another garage. It was very interesting. Okay. So I'm done. Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vaterlaus. Council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I just have two brief comments. One is that I wanted to reiterate Councilmember Beer's comments about the unhoused in Pacifica Task Force. Those applications are out. The deadline is this Friday. And encourage those that are passionate about this issue to, to apply. And again, deadline is Friday. The other comment that I'll make is if you've been by City Hall or near there recently, you'll have seen that the city parking lot at Francisco and Solata has now been resurfaced by Caltrans. So we're thankful for that, and it's looking good. It hasn't been striped yet. That'll be soon. Those are my two brief comments.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to public hearings. Item number 11, the introduction of an ordinance approving development agreement DA-1-18.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Senior Planner Christian Murdock. I'm joined this evening by Planning Director Tina Wermeyerster and Planning Commissioner Ryan Krasky. The item before you is consideration of a development agreement related to a development project proposed on a vacant site immediately south of 2100 Palmetto Avenue in the West Sharp Park neighborhood. A development agreement is a mechanism which allows the city and a private developer, through negotiation and mutual agreement, to obtain certain public and private benefits applicable to a development project, which the city would otherwise be unable to require through its normal land use authorities. The proposed development agreement is the first to be considered under the provisions of Ordinance Number 837-CS enacted by the City Council in November of 2018. Pursuant to state law and the Pacifica Municipal Code, a development agreement must be approved by ordinance. Thus, staff is requesting the City Council to introduce an ordinance this evening containing the necessary provisions to approve the development agreement. While typical ordinances themselves contain significant substantive provisions, in this case, the ordinance is a procedural requirement for approval of the development agreement, and the substantive provisions are contained in the development agreement itself. The provisions of the development agreement may be found in Attachment A of the Agenda Report. The factors for consideration of a development agreement as specified in the Pacifica Municipal Code are included as Attachment D of the Agenda Report. The Planning Commission approved the development permits associated with the development project on May 6, 2019. The project consists of a two-to-three-story mixed-use building consisting of 993 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, fronting Palmetto Avenue, and three residential condominium units with a vesting tentative subdivision map, and removal of a heritage tree on a 5,446-square-foot vacant site. The applicant also requested a parking exception for driveway width, 20 off-street vehicle parking spaces, and two bicycle parking spaces that would be required for the project's commercial component. All required residential parking spaces are provided on-site. Because the Planning Commission approved the development permits and no appeal was filed, the only item before council for consideration is the development agreement, as the Planning Commission's approval of the development permits is final. The Planning Commission also recommended City Council approval of the proposed development agreement. Because approval of the development agreement is integral to the project, particularly as it relates to parking, the development permits approved by the Planning Commission will not have force or effect until the City Council approves the development agreement by ordinance. Private developer benefits of the proposed development agreement include vested rights to proceed with the subject development under the city's current land use regulations for a prescribed period, whereas vesting typically occurs only after issuance of a building permit and commencement of construction, and an initial permit term of up to five years with provision for a two-year extension, which is, which is in excess of the two-year permit term, which would have otherwise applied to the project. Public benefits include specifying the type of commercial use within the project as a restaurant or a café. The proposed development agreement would require the developer to commit to making a good-faith effort to secure a restaurant or café tenant within the commercial space of the project, which involves requiring the developer to demonstrate marketing efforts for not less than nine months, and offering prospective tenants incentives in the form of discounted rent and/or tenant improvement subsidies of up to $75,000. Public benefits additionally include a contribution of $60,000 towards the study and creation of more public parking facilities and improvement of parking availability in the Palmetto area, which would provide crucial resources to the city to establish appropriate policies and public facilities to enable the Palmetto Avenue commercial area to properly function as a downtown commercial district. The developer would also make a contribution of $30,000 to the city towards the study and implementation of a Sharp Park-specific plan, and improvements to the Palmetto area and promotion of Palmetto as a shopping district as part of the city's revitalization efforts. These additional resources would aid the city in its ongoing and future planning efforts to improve the functioning of the Palmetto commercial area. The council's duty in considering the development agreement is to review the recommendation of the Planning Commission and to determine whether the proposal is consistent with the city's general plan and any applicable specific plan, which there is none for this area, and then to approve or disapprove the proposed development agreement, or approve it subject to conditions or, or changes, giving consideration to the factors mentioned earlier, which are included as Attachment D. Based on the analysis contained in the Agenda Report and the determination made by the Planning Commission, staff believes there is sufficient evidence to find the proposed development agreement to be consistent with the general plan, local coastal program, and the factors for consideration in the Pacifica Municipal Code. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council introduce the subject ordinance and, to approve the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I don't have any questions.
No?
Not yet.
Seeing none, we have two people who would like to speak from the public.
Good evening, councilmembers. Staff, wanted to thank everyone for your time this evening and thank staff for a great job putting together staff report. And Christian did a great job explaining the project. I really don't have a whole lot to add, other than, you know, we're excited to get this project developed and, you know, hopefully, it's a catalyst for redevelopment along Palmetto and helps the city get its goals accomplished through the specific plan. I just wanted to say that we're committed, obviously beyond what's in writing, to bring a food use to this project. And the residential brings housing, it activates the upstairs in the, in the rear of the property, and it also provides the economic, you know, engine the project needs to contribute dollars to the city and also the $75,000, I guess, allocation, if you will, towards free rent and/or tenant improvements. And so we feel like we want kind of above and beyond what's required by the city. And there's no kind of set fee yet for parking and lieu, et cetera. So it's hopefully acceptable to council, and I'm here to ask any, or answer any specific questions, should you have any, in terms of, you know, what the space could be, or type of food, uses, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. And Beth Lemke? I don't, I don't see Beth, so. Unless, no? Okay. So we'll bring it back to council. Mary?
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate the community benefits that are attached to this development. I think we need those things in our community. You know, I, I always wish that development could include spaces for lots of families to live, but this is like consistent with the density standard, so I, I'm happy with this.
Deirdre?
Yep. I think this is a win-win for the, for the city. I think it helps jumpstart the, our Palmetto or our Sharp Park-specific plan. I think the developer, again, went above and beyond and made a lot of additional contributions. We're getting almost $90,000 in, in help for parking study and to help jumpstart the Palmetto-specific plan, too. So I, and I would love to see a little café or something there. That would be great, too. And I think the more we get in here, the more we will get in here. So I, I hope everyone agrees, so, thanks.
I agree with all the statements from my fellow councilmembers. One issue, the biggest issue I have is the fact that it's a 900-square-foot commercial area, where, commercial space, which makes me very concerned about the viability of how many businesses can thrive or be a success in an area that's smaller than a Linda Mar Rancher. And so we've taken, and I really don't want to see this be a precedent for, for Palmetto of 900-square-foot restaurants or commercial activities there, because I don't think anything will succeed if we have 900, you know, if we have 20 900-square-foot commercial areas in, on Palmetto. So I do thank the developer and everybody for the development agreement that they're implementing. I also appreciate the fact that the development agreement requires that the building of the housing and the commercial will be done at the same time, so that like one won't be, one will be built and the other one not. I am kind of concerned at the fact that at some point, if the developer cannot find somebody that is, that is not commercially viable, then we could end up with whatever the city manager wants in there. And I think that's not necessarily the best of things there. So overall, I'm happy with all the benefits. I'm very concerned about the viability of a 900-square-foot commercial spot. I mean, even every restaurant or, or coffee place or whatever does need a work area, you know, to prepare food and stuff, store food and stuff like that. And how much of that And I mean, if you just look at the logistics, $3 cup of coffee at 9% sales tax is, what, 20-something cents, and then we get 1% of that, so $0.2 doesn't pay for a cop. And I'm very concerned about the viability of a 900-square-foot commercial area in the project. But I do thank the developer for all the community bennies that they will be giving us.
They do allow for nine months of offering it as a restaurant and an incentive of $75,000. I would assume that in all that time, they want to rent it out. They don't want to leave it empty for the nine months, and they don't want to pay an extra $75,000 to try to get someone to bring their restaurant. So I assume they're probably already going out to try to get a restaurant, because that's what they originally planned for that spot. It is almost 1,000 square feet, and I was trying to think about other restaurants in town, and some of them are in very small spaces, and they managed to do very well. So I think it's a good project. I think that any kind of destination for Palmetto brings people there. The people who are going to live upstairs are going to shop on Palmetto, they're going to eat on Palmetto, and they're going to use our services, and I think that it's a great addition. Thank you.
Can I make a motion? Okay, I move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica approving Development Agreement DA-1-18 to establish specific public benefits and developer benefits in conjunction with a mixed-use development on Palmetto Avenue.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes three to one with one no and one absent. Moving on to number 12, a public hearing and adoption of resolution confirming the annual report from the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. Item 12 on your agenda is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the annual report from the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District, approving their program of expenditures, and assessing the levy for fiscal year 2019-2020 at the same rates levied in fiscal year 2018 through 2019 without change. Our recommendation is to first conduct the public hearing, secondly, rule on the oral and written protest, if any, and finally, adopt the resolution confirming the annual report of the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District Advisory Board, and continuing the assessments levied in fiscal year 2018 to 2019 without change for fiscal year 2019-2020. Staff and members of Pacifica Chamber of Commerce are here and available to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Mike?
So the activity's been pretty much what they've done every year. They've run advertisements in the Central Valley and trying to get people to come to the hotels and stay overnight.
Yes.
I have no other questions from council, and I have no yellow cards.
And I just wanted to kind of let the public know what this is, is basically, the bid is the Business Improvement District, and most, if not all, the hotels and motels in Pacifica are a part of it. It is privately managed by the Chamber of Commerce, which the board of directors of the bid chooses to be their manager. The city just merely acts as the fiscal agent, I believe. We take in, we collect the check because they remit their transit occupancy tax to us, it's just convenient for the hotels, and then we send the check to the bid to spend per their direction and what they want. So the city has no management oversight whatsoever, it's just the fiscal agent and pass-through for the funding. So I just wanted to kind of let the public know what that is. Am I pretty correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they did give us a detailed profit and loss, all of their expenses and their income for the year, so that we do have that available to us.
So I make a motion, we accept the bid report?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes four to zero with one absent. The next item is a resolution of City Council of the City of Pacifica adopting the City of Pacifica 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program.
Mayor Vardalas and council members, I'll tee this up and then turn it over to Deputy Director Bautista. One thing I wanted to mention about the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program this year, is staff has done quite a bit of work on the format of the document, so you may have noticed it different from previous years, and it really lays out with great transparency and clarity about each project, the various funding sources, if there are varied funding sources for that project, as well as details in the description, and the listing of projects is much more concise with continuing projects and currently active projects and new projects that are actually being recommended to be funded in the CIP. In previous years, it was sort of a big list of projects, a bunch of which weren't being funded, and so we've gone to the extent of making sure that that's clear in this document. And I don't know if staff was going to mention that in their presentation, but I wanted to make sure to call it out.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works Engineering and Field Services. The item before you is a resolution to adopt the city's 2019 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program. The Capital Improvement Program, which is the CIP, is an important tool designed to help the city plan and budget for the use of development fees, grants, and other funds. The proposed 2019-2024 CIP book shows recently completed, ongoing, and anticipated public capital improvements and facilities necessitated by new development in the city, council priorities, and community needs. The proposed CIP includes $6.6 million in new projects for Public Works Engineering and $170,000 of new projects for Public Works Wastewater, totaling approximately $6.7 million for fiscal year 2019 through 2020. Ongoing projects continuing into fiscal year 2019 to 2020 total approximately $4.5 million. Some of the notable projects that we will be working on this coming fiscal year are the Cattle Hill Property Trailhead and Parking Lot Project, the Beach Boulevard Picnic Area Landscaping Project, a new work order system, a pavement rehabilitation project, a flurry seal project, the Cabrillo School Pedestrian Crossing Improvement Project, parks, beaches, and trail signage improvements, collection systems in the Gypsy Hill area, also updating the sewer master plan. We'll be finishing the equalization basin, and we'll be working on the 310-330 Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project and the 400 Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project. Adopting and annually updating a CIP that meets statutory requirements will also allow the city to collect development fees as specified in the municipal code. On May 6, 2019, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed Capital Improvement Program and found it to be consistent with the general plan. Tonight, staff is asking council to hold a public hearing regarding the CIP and to adopt the 2019 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program by resolution. And that concludes my brief presentation, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from council? Seeing no questions, I also have no yellow cards from the public. If anyone would like to speak on that, can come forward. And seeing no one, we'll return that to council. Does council like to discuss this, or move forward?
No. I don't have any point of discussion, other than just sort of point out to the public that there's a pretty good detail on the ongoing projects and things that are on hold, things we're always doing, things are on hold, and you can kind of understand why things are prioritized and things get knocked down the list as the year progresses, right? But it's understood, so thanks for, you know, letting us understand that.
It should also be noted to the public, we've had a couple meetings on the Capital Improvement Program already, so we're just doing a side unseen. We have reviewed it previously. So I make a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Program?
I'll second it.
Please vote. And that passes four to zero with one absent. Thank you. Thank you, nice report. On to number 14, which is public hearing to consider recommended 2019-2020 fees and
Good evening, Mayor Vardalas, members of the Pacifica City Council. My name is Lorenzo Hines. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I am here to speak with you about the 2019-2020 fees and charges. We are requesting that the movement and adoption of a resolution approving and increasing user fees and charges as described in Administrative Policy Number Two, and to approve a payment plan option for the cannabis public safety license renewal fee. And we hereby request a public hearing on these particular fees. And I have a presentation. So our 2019-2020 master fee schedule, and we've, you've seen this presentation before, so I'll just sort of go through it in sort of summation form. Our fees grow by either a CPI or a flat dollar amount. It depends on the department director and the directions that, the direction that they want those fees to go. Our fees are initially based on a cost allocation plan and fee study that was done back in 2013 by the Willdan Consultancy. And some fees, as I mentioned earlier, some fees are going up, some fees are staying the same. And the reason for those fees shifting or staying the same vary, again, depending on the direction of the department. So a couple of the fees that we wanted to bring to your attention, we'll quickly go through all of the fees that have, or all of the changes in the schedule, but the ones that I wanted to bring to your attention are the appeals fee, moving from $375 to $500, the cannabis public safety license fee, moving from $450 to $22. There's a new heritage tree appeals fee that we're instituting for $388. We also have attached a memo from Parks Director Mike Perez, speaking to information regarding certain aquatic fees. And so we may want to have a discussion about those fees tonight. But in general, I'm going to start with packet page 432, and just give you an idea of what's, just some brief, an overview of the changes. In packet page 32, under the City Council Agenda packets and under photocopies, we have added costs in there that are consistent with the photocopy cost and photocopy verbiage that you see in the Public Works and the planning areas. And so we wanted to make sure all of those line items were consistent. On page 433, under Study Sessions, there was additional verbiage there. We struck that additional verbiage and made it a little more concise. Also, in the very last line of page 433, under Specialized Planning Services, we also made that more concise, and we indicated that the applicant shall pay the full consultancy cost. And in the past, we actually indicated that they would pay the cost plus 10%. We just adjusted that to just reflect that they would pay the full consultant cost. On package page 434, under the banner and temporary signage request, which is right in the middle of the page, we inserted the words "private property" to make that clear where this fee applies.
Can you clarify exactly what that means? I mean, if I want to put a banner in my front yard, I have to pay $100, $109? Banner, temporary signage requests, private property.
Director Warmeister will speak to that.
Okay, I'm just not quite clear on what that means.
Sure, so our sign ordinance regulates banners, and they're only allowed in certain areas, and so because you're going to be hearing a banner policy this evening on streetlights, I wanted to make it clear that this was referring to private property, usually commercial sites, that maybe they're having a grand opening or something like that, and they want to put up a temporary banner for a certain period of time, and they get this permit to allow them to do that.
Okay, what about Highway 1 near Pacifica Lumber? There's a lot, you know, it's private property, you know, like Spindrift has a permanent sign, but there are other temporary ones.
Right, so I don't think I would classify those as banners, I'm not sure how I would classify them. They're more like signs that have been there, that their copy is changed periodically for, like, a new play that Spindrift is putting on.
Right, Spindrift is the only real permanent one, but there's stuff for, like, you know, the Terranova Car Show, and now I think there's one for Pacifica, and then there's other ones for, like, the Education Foundation. So if I read this, that would mean each time one of those groups wants to put up a banner...
They should be getting permits, but many of them do not, or most of them do not.
Right, I know they don't, because I've never gotten them when I put them up.
Yeah, and I believe the property owner gives them permission, and so there's really no, there's no complaints that have been coming in, so it hasn't been the highest priority to enforce those.
Okay.
And it would be the property owner who has to pay the fee, correct?
It, no, the applicant would pay the fee. Ultimately, the property owner is just responsible for making sure that a permit is obtained, whether it's them or their applicant.
So if, let's say, I don't know, I'm part of the Terranova Education Foundation, and I see the Pacifica School District one there, and I want theirs down because we're having our dinner dance. If they call up and make a complaint, somebody has to pay $100, right?
Yeah, we would research that and see where that banner sign comes in under the code. And, for example, there are certain periods of time, like during election season, where individuals can allow people to put up signs temporarily. individuals can allow people to put up signs temporarily, banner signs temporarily.
Okay, and then for like the fireworks booth that's usually there, they would, they're just paid, they get it because it's...
That's part of their permit, yeah.
Their permit, okay. What's the rest of the council think about that? I mean, there's a lot of nonprofit groups that, I'm thinking specifically of that place, but there are certain corners that do have signs that are kind of almost permanent because the homeowner, the business owner really supports something. And if somebody, this is Pacifica, I mean, if somebody gets ticked off at that, they can turn them into code enforcement, I assume, right? And then somebody would have to pay the hundred bucks.
Right, and so signs are very nuanced. There is a sign, I think it's off a Fassler, where there's, it's kind of similar to a large real estate sign for the size of the property, but there's sometimes some religious speech on the sign.
Right.
And we, as the city, if you can read it, and that's why you're enforcing the sign, you're not supposed to be enforcing that sign code, right? So if it's the same size as a real estate sign, and a real estate sign is permitted to go there, that sign can stay there. So our, you know, we do have some work that needs to be done on our sign code, but it is very nuanced, and it's not necessarily easy to answer all these questions, given the age of our sign code and some of the case law that's occurred since that code was put into effect.
I don't know, I'm just a little concerned, but nobody else is. I can't, you know. Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, when you're reading something that you don't want to read, that's concerning. But you can't turn them in, so...
Well, I mean, actually, the Beach Coalition puts all those signs up.
Oh, yeah, I know, Beach Coalition, I know, but so does Little League, so does, I'm, you know...
Yeah, but a lot of those are on public property, which this doesn't cover.
And it's a whole other, it's a whole other ordinance that we would have to study and do.
Right, you know.
That's what I'm hearing, so it doesn't even come into play this evening on this banner stuff.
And just to clarify, this fee has not changed, it's been there for years. I only added the clarification that it shouldn't be confused with the banner policy you'll be seeing coming up. That's all of us.
See, Dina, no good deed goes unpunished.
Yeah, there definitely are banners that are placed on Caltrans property, a lot of different places that it doesn't seem like they should be.
Right, if they're on private or public property, Caltrans, as well as any city-owned property, the Public Works would take care of taking them down on city property. And then Caltrans would either take them down or work cooperatively with Public Works to take them down off of Caltrans. But, you know, just like anything that happens in government, it takes a little while, so they're not taking down as quickly as perhaps...
So by the time they have their project, you know, they take them down themselves because it takes so long, so...
Okay, we'll move on for a second.
Okay. Moving on.
Okay, so the next change is at the bottom of packet page four thirty-five. There is a note there regarding building valuation data, and we just updated and clarified where that data is published and what building code index will be referring to. And I am just going through here. And I believe the next update is on page, or packet page four forty-five. Page fourteen of twenty-seven of our fee schedule. And so this is the marijuana public safety license fee, the yearly license renewal. We came before council a couple of weeks ago and presented the fee schedule and focused in on this particular fee, because the fee as it stood, as it stands right now at four hundred and fifty dollars is not coming anywhere near covering the cost of past program implementation and going forward implementing the program. And so we came forward with a pretty detailed schedule of expenses that needed to be recouped, both from the past and going forward, and presented that to council. We, after the council meeting, sat down with members of the cannabis industry here in Pacifica. They raised some intriguing issues about our calculation, and so as a result of those, that particular conversation, the fee that we had before you at the last meeting was roughly twenty-two thousand, or I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand, and so now it has gone down to twenty-two thousand fifty-nine. And as you can see on the slide in front of you, all the numbers are the same except for the election cost, and that's the big number that changed. The number that we had before you, the election cost, were a little over seventy-six thousand. We went through, did some calculations, did some pro-rata distributions of the measures that were on that particular ballot versus the total cost, and we brought the seventy-six down to twenty-five. And so we have the total prior costs, I'll go back here, of two hundred and five thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And so those costs divided by five are added to this ongoing cost to issue the public license fee, public safety license fee. And all the costs that you see here are all the same except for the repayment of cannabis regulatory startup. And so that went from fifty-one down to forty-one. The new fee is twenty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars. In addition to presenting this fee, we also proposed to allow the folks who are in this particular industry a payment plan, because we realize that these businesses are just starting, some of them are still under construction, and we realize that that, you know, that can be quite a hardship to have twenty-two thousand, a twenty-two thousand dollar bill waiting for you. So we have put before you a payment plan of no more than nine months, and this payment plan will also have an interest component as well, so the city is making money on the dollars that it's essentially loaning. And we would hope that that would make the cannabis industry a little more agreeable, or make this fee a little more palatable to the cannabis industry. I see, yes?
One other thing I think to note here is that you would be working with the individual businesses to, this is the second year, right? So the first year is their four hundred and fifty, right? The second year is this...
When they come back for their renewal.
Exactly, sorry, the renewal. So, and then it would be, say, their first year, they're still not open, you're going to be working with each individual business to, regardless of the nine months, when that nine months starts. Is that correct? In other words, you're going to, there's going to be an accommodation for the fact that they're not open, they're not making money yet, and you're going to work with them individually.
We're going to try to benchmark when they open for business.
Exactly, that's kind of, thank you. And the other thing, that question that did come up was some of the fees that are associated, the proposal was, and I'm not sure if you discussed this with them, that if they didn't use any of the services, public safety, things like that, could they recoup those costs at the end of the year? I mean, I know, I know the answer, but I'm asking it.
So the thing is, that question you just asked, you can ask it for the entire fee schedule.
Yes.
And more likely than not, there will be utilization of those services. We are doing our best to collect all the fees that support the services that we provide in this master fee schedule, but that 2013 survey that all these fees are based on, we are due for another survey. And I can pretty much guarantee you, when that comes back, these fees are going to be higher.
Okay.
So...
Roger.
Gotcha.
Okay, so they did pay an initial ten thousand dollars when each of these cannabis businesses applied, so they did pay that part of it, too.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Director Wermeyer and Chief Stidl come up here and speak to you about the beginnings of the program.
Okay, and while they're coming, I see that you divided this by six...
Yes.
Which is the proposed number of cannabis locations, and it could possibly be less, not more, the number of locations.
Okay.
Will that change anything in the future?
Well, the thing is, I only have authority for six. Council has approved six.
But if there are only four...
Then we'll have to address it if there's four.
Okay.
But we're going to want to know what happened to those other two, because those were approved by council.
Yes, and it's slow-going.
Okay.
Thank you.
They're growing their inventory.
They're growing their inventory. Tina?
So I can speak to the ten thousand dollars. That was for the use permit process, the marijuana use permit process. Now we're calling it the cannabis application permit, or activity permit, excuse me. So that is separate from this fee, and so it's for time and materials to process the use permit application specifically, and so it's not included in this fee. And anything that we don't spend, or if we need more, we can ask for it, or they can get it back. So it's just like any other use permit deposit that an applicant makes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the...
I have a question.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
And sorry, I didn't send this ahead of time, but I'm curious of what happens after the five years? So when it, you know, you recoup all the costs, and then what?
That hundred and thirty-two thousand goes down by forty-one thousand, unless any of those fees that you see up there are higher, because we have nine MOUs, and our costs are going up.
So in other words, the businesses don't have to pay that after five years?
The forty-one, yeah, the businesses don't have to pay the recoup after five years. But I can't sit here and tell you that those dollars are going, that there's going to be a drop of a hundred, of forty-one thousand after five years, because those other costs may creep up.
Understood.
Maybe not to the extent of the forty-one, but they may creep up.
And we'll, you'll let us know these things as you go along.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
I'll just add that, just as a reminder, that the fee schedule is an annually adopted thing, so as we move along, every year there'll be adjustments to it that would reflect things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. This is an...
Seeing no other questions from council, we do have a card from an audience member.
I still have a couple more to go.
Oh, you want, okay. Well, it was on this subject, so I'll let you, I'll let you finish. Trying to move it along.
I understand. The other thing I wanted to mention is on packet page four forty-nine, there is a, at the very, at the top of the page, second line down, Heritage Tree removal, Heritage Tree Permit Appeal Fee of three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That's a brand-new fee this year. And then about three-quarters down the page, there is a Paint Driveway Curb Tips of two sixteen, and that is also a new fee. The next change is on packet page four fifty, and basically all of the wastewater fees have been folded into the fee schedule. On packet page four fifty-two, there are a number of increases for, first of all, the first group of increases is the community picnic areas, and you can see that that schedule of fees has increased. The next is the aquatic classes, and you can see that from semi-private all the way down to learn-to-swim levels four through six have increased. The daytime summer-only fees regarding aquatics have also increased. The Oceana Pool Rental Swim Meet has increased, and then the party, pool party program has also increased slightly. As we move to packet page four fifty-three, the recreational playground program, the membership fee, both from September through June and July-August have increased. The J-Teen Center, the membership fee from September through May and January through May have increased. The senior programs at the bottom of the schedule have increased modestly. On packet page four fifty-five, the surf camps, the small camp, we've added the small camp fees for January 2021 to the schedule, and so that's a new addition. For film and photo shoots, the next section down, our commercial filming has, commercial filming permit has increased, and also the major commercial filming has also increased. And the schedule also includes a philanthropic slash city sponsor language that addresses nonprofit events given by entities that work with the city. And so those are the changes, but the significant changes are, as we discussed, the cannabis fee increase, the yearly license renewal, the appeal fee, the couple of fees that we've added in Public Works, and we're ready to discuss the appeal fee if you'd like, or if we've addressed that adequately between the last meeting, that's okay, too. But that concludes my presentation for now of the presentation of the fees.
Not many questions.
Okay, sorry, I tried to rush you.
Sorry.
Now I'll go to the public. I have one card, Holly Smalley.
Good evening, city staff, and Madam Mayor, and council members of the council. I'm here tonight on, I'm with Lit, one of the dispensaries, one of the managing directors, but also on behalf of the San Mateo County Cannabis Association, which we're excited about and newly formed. And really, I just wanted to, on behalf of the association, thank all of you. It was incredibly refreshing to be able to sit down with the city and to express concerns over significant increases in renewal fees with the same time having significant startup costs, and it was a real uncomfortable moment to realize what you might be paying very early on without having been open yet, even though we're working really hard to get open, I think we all are. And it was just refreshing, and we just wanted to say thank you. It was lovely, and I think really encouraging to the industry, which is one of our newest industries in the community, also likely an industry that feels a little bit not included. And so it was a pleasure. It was also lovely, I was able to speak with Madam Mayor, council members, Eider Martin and Mary Beer, and it was also equally refreshing. Do you want to call your council members, or to call upon your city, and to have that democratic process of sitting down, especially with that industry? It does so much to create relationships... relationships, it does so much to feel a part of a community. And I had some additional questions tonight, but they've all been answered. And really, I just wanted to take the time to thank each of you. It meant a lot to us, I think it meant a lot to the industry, and I think it says a lot about your leadership and commitment to your community. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other cards, I'll bring it back to council.
Question?
Go ahead.
I think, I don't think it's in this part here, but in-lu parking fee, that's gonna be covered at a later date. I didn't, I could've missed it in there, but we've always talked about the cost of a parking space versus what we were collecting in-lu parking fees.
Yeah, it's, yeah, this, this year on the, on the council's work plan is a study to study the in-lu parking fees.
I just wanna be sure that's gonna be dealt with. Motion?
Yeah, no, we were gonna talk about, I wanted to thank Park and Rec's Director, Mike Perez, and for the memo and the research on the, the fee increase. And I wanna make sure I'm seeing it here. Am I looking at packet page 453?
And also, the informational memo is on packet page 459.
Right. So was this a point of discussion, or was there, did we incorporate the, I don't see the fee increase.
No, there's no fee increase. We were directed to do, do some research and bring back the results of that research before council, and I guess we could have, so we could have a further discussion. And that's what the memo on packet page 459 speaks to. The two issues that are brought up in the memo are the drop-in recreation for lap swim and water aerobics programs. And in this memo, we've indicated that only three of the surrounding agencies, Daly City, Brisbane, and Highlands, charge a non-resident fee. Daly City and Brisbane are both a dollar more per person, and Highlands is quite high at five per, $5 per more. Our fees, $5 for youth and seniors, $6 for adults are higher than average resident fees for the surveyed cities. So, and, and the surveyed cities, apparently, the average is $4.10 for the youth, $4.25 for seniors, and $5.75 for the adults. That's their resident fees. And we currently do not collect resident or non-resident information for our drop-in customers. We've estimated that the number to be about 25% non-resident, and the potential additional revenue for increasing the fee for non-residents would be approximately $5,500 bucks a year.
Yeah, I guess I misunderstood that as we did, we were, that was a recommendation to change it because that's what council had discussed. So we got the research, Mike, you were also kind of interested in this as well. So it looks like if we increase, if we increase it a dollar, the, for drop-in, for non-residents, we make $5,500 bucks a year. If we increase it by $5, the all-access membership, we make $5,400 increase a year. Now, none of that includes having to, you know, take the time out to check somebody's ID. I understand that. So this is a point of discussion.
If I may add to that, from the council's previous discussion, what we talked about, what the council talked about was how administratively it'd be very difficult for us to, to, to check the drop-in fees, because we don't check IDs. And so the council hit more on the idea of the all-access pass, and how much money would that potentially raise, or what would the issues be, the information that the council needed to discuss that further. There wasn't a decision by the council at that meeting to put that fee increase in, it was for staff to come back with the information. So that's what you have in the, in the staff report, showing that for increasing the all-access pass by $5, which again, part of that information is also, there's only three other cities that do that in our region. And so we would be the fourth that charges a non-resident fee for that type of service. But to increase it by $5, and we wouldn't recommend increasing it more than $5 for fear that it might drive people away, but that would result in an estimated $5,054 per year. That's based on our, our current numbers. So this is all information for the council's discussion.
I thought we did talk about this, because we talked about the fact that they don't check IDs, and it would cause issues maybe in time, and people coming through the lines of trying to check everybody's ID. And would you really have your ID when you went swimming? Not necessarily, so.
Right, so Mike suggested then, research, doing research on the all-access membership. So then, regardless of where you live or who you are, you would just pay five additional, well, the research shows that five additional dollars per person, per person is $5,400 a year.
Right, and 55, we, I don't know if it's worth it, I mean, given the staff time plus, I mean, we do wanna encourage people to try to swim and get exercise and everything else, so, I mean, for $5,500 a year, it's probably not worth the hassle at the door, the lines people would probably have is, you know, kids, I mean, when I was a kid, I didn't carry around a wallet, you know? They just kinda let you in, so I don't know if it's even worth it to do that. That's my opinion, looking at the numbers. Except, where's Highlands Recreation District? I've never heard of it.
San Mateo.
San Mateo? Okay, thanks.
Recreation District, not a, not a city itself.
Right. That's my thought.
And I, I appreciate the research. Is it appropriate to ask Director Perez, like, what do you think? Like, do you think this is, it would be worth it, or? I, I would like to hear from, from Director Perez.
Make him come up here with a cane, look at that.
He's tough.
Good evening, council members. So just one clarification, so the Highlands Recreation District, it's kind of, in my opinion, we should probably throw it out. They do, they're, they're specific to their, it's like a neighborhood association that pays for a recreation district. And $5 is huge. So, and that's why I wanna point that out. And I think it's important to point out that out of those agencies that we did survey, there's only two that charge a non-resident fee. So we would still be well under half the cities that are charging a non-resident, so. And it would be somewhat a hassle, doesn't mean we couldn't do it. I would think it would be much easier if we had a better, you know, our, we're working towards getting a point-of-sale system up there, but it's not ready to go for connectivity issues and stuff. And we are, are charging, our resident fees are already higher than the average of the other ones, which you heard Lorenzo mention that as well, so, you know. Usually, we compare our fees, the reason why some fees are going up and some fees don't, is we take a look at what's happening. We consider the price point for our customers, we also consider what our surrounding areas are doing. We're not always necessarily competing against another city, but it's always good to look at what they do as well. So when we look at the other fees in here that did raise or didn't raise, there was thought and research and those types of things that went into it to kind of figure it out. And those aren't the only things, but again, we consider the people that do come through our doors and what they would pay, and is that helping to cover the cost? And the reactions that we might get, or things like that, there's a lot of factors in there. But otherwise, we'd probably raise all our fees every year. But, you know, there's a good deal of our fees that stayed the same this year.
Sorry for making you come up, it's good to see you, welcome back.
Thank you.
I said my piece, I mean.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
For the research.
Does anybody else wanna raise a fee, or?
Well, I'm not gonna protest, so, doesn't sound like it.
I don't. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Let's, let's see, this, this is item for the fees. I move to adopt a resolution approving increasing user fees and charges as described in administrative policy number two, and to approve a payment plan option for the cannabis public safety license renewal fee.
I'll, I'll second.
Please vote. That passes four to zero with one absent. Item 15, final presentation of the 2019-2020 budget. This is council consideration.
No, this is just for information only.
Okay.
At this point. We'll be bringing this back to you on June 24th for passage and movement of the resolution to approve the 1920 budget. But we thought we'd just take, give you a sort of, one more sort of run-through as to what this budget contains, and just to make sure you're clear, and if you have any more questions, this is, this is a good time, actually, any time is a good time, but it's just another opportunity for us to present this budget to you and answer any questions you may have. So, again, tonight, we're doing the final presentation of the 2019-20 budget. We are just looking for you to provide direction to staff related to the development of the 1920 budget. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to continue staff's presentation of the budget information and the proposed budget, and to receive any final input from council before finalizing the budget before council, for council consideration of adoption on June 24th, 2019. So I'm gonna go through, we've got a sort of an updated PowerPoint for you. And so our first slide lays out our overall general fund budget. We have revenues, we're anticipating revenues of $36.1 million. That goes with expenditures, and we're about, and we've got a typo on the expenditures, that should be 36,124. And, so I've got an error in my spreadsheet somewhere. So as you can see, the budget remains balanced, and we'll talk about the department budgets in a second. On the revenue side, as, as we've mentioned to you last time, the department program revenues and the property taxes make up the bulk of the city's revenues. Some of the smaller components are TOT, or transient occupancy tax, and sales tax. The, on the expenditure side, public safety makes up roughly 50% of our budget. And this budget also contains implementation of the budget strategies. And so we start with the first strategy of increasing the general fund reserves. And so we're proposing to increase the general fund reserves by $1 million. We also have a proposal for the education revenue augmentation allocation, also known as ERAF. And so we are expecting an ERAF payment in August 2019. This is our proposal for allocating those dollars when they show up in August. We also expect another payment in January 2020. Those two payments, by the way, I'm anticipating will equal our normal annual payment. So there's nothing extra here. Our ERAF for January 2020, we already know that $88,000 of that is obligated, or will be, will be allocated to the nongovernmental organizations. And we've put a placeholder there for Streets Program of $400,000, but we will be bringing that funding proposal back to council when that, those dollars are available. And then, per our policies, the remainder of those dollars flow to the disaster accounting The next recommended strategy is our Streets Program, and continuing to improve, improve our pavement condition index. And so we have cobbled together Measure W, SB 1 revenues, and ERAF dollars to continue the Streets Program for this year. The next strategy is the cannabis business payment, cannabis business program revenues. And as our businesses come online, we're anticipating roughly $125,000 in tax revenues from those organizations. We also are anticipating increased transient occupancy tax from our short-term rental program. We have a voluntary collection agreement, which was amended tonight, and our, and, the council amended it tonight, and so that relationship with Airbnb continues. We will also be utilizing dollars from the general fund balance to continue with the general plan update. Information technology, we, there were a number of things that we anticipate having to do, including moving, improving, or I'm sorry, replacing servers and training and various other things we need to do as a city to stay current with our IT infrastructure. The use of limited-term staffing to meet council's goals, and so there is a request to, to be included in the general fund budget. Childcare reserve, we'll be using the childcare reserve for funding of some capital projects. And we're also funding for council prioritized projects at $382,000. We anticipate beginning, beginning funding for Section 115 trust. There is a memo attached to this item that explains what the trust is and why we arrived at that particular strategy of going with the 115 trust. That memo also helps us meet the requirements of a grand jury report that was issued some time ago. And the last budget strategy is the repayment of the wastewater treatment program, pension obligation loan, and stretching out that repayment, instead of it being over two years, stretching it out for five years. That allows the general fund to bank essentially $545,000 to address increased expenses regarding salary, increased expenses regarding pensions, and just to help us stay balanced. At the same time, it does not affect wastewater's ability to carry on its capital project activity. And those dollars, as long as they stay outstanding, the more they will be gaining interest. So it's not a free loan, it is an interest-bearing, and it will continue to be interest-bearing. The next slide, and by the way, if you have questions, let me know. Again, this is a conversation and a presentation. The first budget that we'll see is the general government budget, and these are all of the changes that you see to the general budget, general government budget. We started at 4.167, we ended up at 4.739, and we have a number programmatic additions in there regarding, we spoke about IT network improvements, priority-based budgeting. We're moving forward with the next stage of our document management system. We're looking at Division 2025. Our HR department will be looking to update policies which are almost 20 years old, and so we're hoping to do that. And also, we're anticipating some labor litigation expenses as well. We've got, we've got dollars put aside for the homeless task force. The EDC budget is part of this. We're also anticipating additional election costs. There is a limited-term staffing for sustainability. And also, with our accounting folks, we're converting a half-time admin assistant to a full-time accounting tech. And again, that is neutral, budget-neutral. The police department, their budget, no, no major changes other than... The police department, their budget, no major changes other than salary. And so those baseline changes are minute. North County Fire, we built in dollars for temporary salaries for the folks who are in the academy. There is a small equipment replacement reserve that we'll be paying into on an annual basis. And we're also scheduling $208,000 to address fires, overtime. Anticipated overtime for the upcoming year.
Lorenzo, what's the additional election costs?
Library?
That's the estimated election cost for next year, if we did a GEO bond measure in March or in November, is an amount I believe that is about 150,000. Clerk Coffey could maybe recall the precise number. And we have some money that's already allocated for that. The 90,000 difference would make that up. As a placeholder to have budgeted in the event that the council decides to put a measure on the ballot.
For the library?
For the library, yeah.
We'd actually also talked about having the study session regarding fireworks and that being a potential election, as well as the two city council seats.
Yes, we have planned to do the initial study session discussion about that, but this budget doesn't contain any placeholder dollars for any other types of ballot measures. So it doesn't contain a placeholder for that. And if that's the direction that it goes, we'll have to do an adjustment for that.
And Sarah is probably the best one to ask this question, but the primary has been moved up to March. So if we were gonna have, let's say, a GEO bond and/or fireworks election in March, what is our deadline to put that on the ballot?
I would need to research the deadline for placing those on the ballot for the March election, but I believe that the timeline typically starts around 80 days prior, but I would look into when the deadline is and get back to you.
Approximately September would be probably our deadline, or October, right?
I can add to that. We recently had a library-related conversation, and the deadline will be more in the December timeframe, by the end of December, but given the council meeting schedule, you know, early December and such.
So the next slide begins with parks, beaches, and recreation. And I'm gonna refer you to, you were handed a replacement set a second ago, and I believe it's five or six pages where we've had some changes, slight changes in the numbers because of Lorenzo being a perfectionist. So I wanted to, first of all, admit that. But I wanted to, the first page you'll see is the replacement packet page for page 463. And so what has changed is the parks, beaches, and recreation budget. The schedule that's in your agenda packet did not contain the $475,000 for the new childcare augmentation. And so it is added in this particular schedule to bring the parks budget up to the 5.120 million, which you'll see in all the other schedules. The planning budget contains various adjustments. We started 2.568 million. There are consultant assistants for the priority development area. There is the general plan and the local coastal plan update, SB2 dollars. Planning has set aside dollars to help us with the document scanning project. And the reason that number's so big is because we intend on scanning some of the very large plans that planning has and trying to do what we can to mitigate the paper. There's also dollars set aside for the affordability housing impact fee setting. The next up is public works, and so there are dollars in the public works budget for the flood and sea level rise resiliency agency. We have part-time employees. There are dollars set aside for dust control at the dog park. We're also anticipating increased overtime. There is dollars for tree maintenance and increased contractual services. The next group is our non-departmental expenditures, and the most important line item in that particular budget is the nongovernmental organizations, making sure that that's scheduled. And then we have transfers out for various obligations that the general fund has to pay, debt service, liability insurance, various other things. And so that's the 1.153 million. And so the total budget, as it stands right now, is, total general fund budget is 36.124 million. And so I've broken out here on slide 10 how that 36.124 million, how that breaks out. You'll also see it on your corrected packet page 466, but this is how it all totals out. So I'm gonna move to the next group of slides. And so this is the, on page 11, we are projecting what our general fund balances will look like, at least the undesignated balance and the general fund reserve will look like by June 30, 2020. Our general fund balance is higher than the 3.4 million, but those dollars above the 3.4 million are all obligated in some way. And so I'm just showing you the dollars that we actually have flexibility. My staff and I will be embarking on yet another forensic exercise this summer, and we will be doing a deep dive into our fund balances, our general fund balances, to look at all of the reserves that are there. And so I'll definitely let you know if we have any good news with that exercise. So as far as our other funds are concerned, we'll start with wastewater. And we briefed you on wastewater back on May 28th and showed you their budget. And so this is a snapshot on slide 13, and you'll also find it on packet page 465 as well. In addition, I wanted to take you to the other funds, and you'll see those on packet page 481. And you also have a correction page as well. And I'll explain to you what drove all the, or most of the adjustments that you see. So let me know, okay, so we're at packet page 481, and we're also looking at the replacement page for 481. Up in the Fund 38, we had, I had gotten permission from council to use some of the ERAF money to help pay the debt service that comes out of Fund 22, to keep Fund 22 from going further into the red. Part of that exercise is I needed to get expenditure authority to take the money out of Fund 38. And so that's that 143,000 that you see up there, which drove an increase in the total expenditures, which meant I had to adjust the bottom line of the budget. So I wanted you to know what was driving it, because if it wasn't there, my financial services manager would be a little cranky with me because she wouldn't have authority to do what we needed her to do. And so, let's see, let's see. I also have a slight change, and this was basically a typo, on page, packet page 474. And this is also in your correction. I needed to fix the typo that was on, that was distorting the general government budget. So you'll see that the packet page, you'll see that in the original, the finance budget went from 959 down to 260, which got the attention of my finance staff. And so as it turns out, we had an alignment issue, and so that replacement page that you have fixes that in total. By the way, for the public, I have copies of this replacement package in the back. And so as page 14 lays out to you, that is, page 14 of the slide, that is our budget. It is 68.991 million. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions.
Erika?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to say thank you because this is not easy. I know it's your day job, but it's not, it doesn't come second nature to me, but because you do such a great job explaining it and going through it line by line, over the course of two months, it becomes so much easier every time. So I want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I want to echo that too, and thank you for spending extra time with me when I needed more direction. I really appreciate that. And I encourage the community, you know, if you have questions about this, please ask because the city staff is more than happy to answer those questions, so thanks.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Mike?
Regarding the 115 trust, okay?
Yes.
So I read from the staff report, and my understanding was that once the money's in there, it can only be used for pension obligations, whether current or unfunded liabilities, correct?
That's, yes, that's our understanding, yes.
Okay. And then, now in regards to our unfunded liability, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm asking a question, kind of making it in the form of a statement. The unfunded liability from PERS could be increased if they lower their discount rate, correct?
Correct.
So making large chunks towards the principal there could be meaningless because they'll just lower the discount rate to, it's currently what, I think seven now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's around seven.
Seven or seven and a quarter, I believe.
Right, so if they lower it down to six and three quarters, all of a sudden, we could end up owing another couple mil or whatever, correct? So I fully support doing a 115 trust, but I noticed when in your report here, when you had the reserve sheet and the funded and all that, that did not count in there. Is that because the money, that was not listed as one of our assets? And that's because of the structure of the trust?
Right, right. I, basically, that 200,000 goes out of our fund balance and it's in a trust somewhere.
And I had called up Lorenzo and asked him for an explanation as exactly where's the 200,000 coming from? Because if we're running a deficit here, what good does it do to take 200,000 out of this checkbook, put it in this savings account, but we still have the deficit? You know what I mean? And he explained that it's actually coming from these undesigned reserves. Now, my question is, we have a deficit now, we're putting the 200,000 into the 115 trust. What are the parameters in terms of pulling the money out of the 115 trust if we could only use it for retirement? Like, the rainy day's kind of here?
Yeah.
You know, it's not the rainy day fund because the rainy day's here?
It gives us flexibility in that if we are putting money away and we find ourselves in a situation where we can't pay, or it would be a hardship to pay the UAL or the unfunded part, we can use some of that trust to help pay that annual payment.
So to go to the extreme, if, let's say, we put $1 million of ERAF money into the 115 trust, we could actually use that money to, our current payment to PERS is how much every year, roughly?
It's citywide, I can tell you it's just gone up by 800,000, so.
Okay, so we could, let's say it's 800,000 constant, we could pull two, if we had a million in the trust, pull 200 out every year and then only have a $600,000 cost to PERS, correct? Now, the
It's a hedge.
Pardon?
It's just a hedge.
Right.
That allows us to, you know, these are dollars that we can use to address an expense that is volatile. And so this just gives us a little bit more of a hedge. But at the same time, I'm just gonna, at the same time, we have to make sure that we have dollars, that we have adequate dollars to keep the services going and to help keep us growing. Because as we fortify our current base of services and we add money to opportunities that help us grow, it's the hope that those opportunities will create prosperity, which will again allow us to help pay these other things, yes.
Can the 115 trust be used to help pay down our pension obligation bonds?
That I don't know. That I don't know. I'll have to, I still have to sit down with our financial advisor and our actuary and iron out those kinds of specifics.
Okay, and is that just put into our regular fund with the county or the state as the investment vehicle for the 115 trust?
That, I have to make that decision too. And so I'll be coming back to council with very specific, very specific proposals. Right now, I have to assess what's the best vehicle, what gets us the best interest rate. I have to decide whether we go with PARs or do we go with CalPERS? Because both of them offer the trust. And so I have to do some weighing. And then once I figure out which way we're gonna go, or some options for going, then we will bring those before you with a recommendation. But right now, we're just asking for permission to at least start that process and to isolate or set aside these 200,000 so we can invest it in the trust.
You know, this is a new wrinkle. So the organization that says we owe 26 million and can all of a sudden make us owe 30 million if they change the discount rate, is also where we have to send the 115 trust? We can't have that in our standard trust department?
We don't.
Okay.
And so it's an option for us. And yes, that's the stigma that they're dealing with, yes. So
It's kind of putting money in the clown car.
Yeah. So my job is to provide you with options. And I think I can already see where it's going.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, because PARs and PERS are both run by the same investment group, aren't they? Or two different investment groups?
Two different investment groups, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we'll see, we'll see.
Okay. I never knew that.
You just got a preview of my summer.
What's on it?
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The management analyst position, is that the position that we discussed about a sustainability position that's being proposed to be added?
Correct, yes. The 125 is at a management analyst classification level, and that's the limited one-year term recommendation in order to be able to increase staff capacity to deliver on all of the council's goals. Particularly the environmental sustainability ones, such as the climate action plan implementation and the various litter pilot studies and all of sort of the and the various litter pilot studies and all of sort of the associated policies and energy efficiencies and grant writing, et cetera, that are related to that.
What about our general fund process? Our specific plan for Sharp Par, would that person also help there? Because I, those things need to get done in a rapid manner instead of continuing and continuing.
Yeah. Part of, part of the design behind the recommendation is that by having this, this limited term addition in staff capacity frees up planning expertise and frees up financial ACM Hines, Assistant City Manager Hines, expertise to focus on their areas that need, need a lot of attention in order for this person to work on those other programs.
Also the, I don't want to spend any money on this, but upgrading at some point the description because a typewriter, it says they use a typewriter, and since I haven't really seen a typewriter in the last 20 years, I'd hope that at some point our job descriptions get updated, but not at the cost of any other item that we need to consider.
Yeah. Our HR department of two folks are, are working on trying to bring things current in the 20th century for our job descriptions, et cetera.
I just, I've said this before, I'm gonna say this again. I understand the need for this position. I don't, I mean, the management analyst job description sounds a lot better to me than a sustainability coordinator. Because we discuss, we spend so much time on sustainability. I have a right to say what I want.
I'm just reacting. My apologies.
It's okay. You can. You're allowed to. So I, I just think that this person's supposed to be helping with a lot of other things and not just on straws and plastic bags.
Well, sustainability's a lot more than just straws and plastic bags. We have a climate crisis, so I, I think it's a, it's a really important position to have. And also I'll reiterate that it does free up the time of our other staff to work on the, on the things that, that you're talking about, so.
Deirdre?
I have no words because I'm, I'm just blown away that there are other counties that have entire offices dedicated to this stuff and we can't even get a limited part-time, we can't even get the mayor to agree to a limited part-time staff member to work on our stuff that we need to work on. Millbrae has one for crying out loud. I mean, and like you said, we talk about litter every, every meeting. Well, maybe we wouldn't talk about it every meeting if we had this position. Bonnie O'Connor spends a lot of her time trying to work on our climate action plan and other stuff. This will allow either her to do that or, or to work on other things that Director Wormmeister needs to. So I don't feel like I should have to convince anyone, just like I shouldn't have had to convince anyone, that climate adaptation should be one of our top 10 priorities. And thank you for accommodating that, moving it up or making it at least top 10. I just, I'm not gonna fight on this, but I am just blown away that anybody today needs to be convinced that this is important.
I think we have huge issues, like if we could get the marijuana going, we would have income to do some of the rest of our programs that we don't have the income because it's taken two and a half years to get the marijuana dispensaries. We have one open dispensary. I think our economic development is huge. In order to do some of the sustainability, we need to have the economic development and income to afford to have a sustainability coordinator.
I agree.
And if we don't have that, I just don't see how we can go to that next level without having the income to support this. This is a one-time thing. It's a one-year. We pretty much all know that if you start something for one year, it continues. So it's going to be a continuous position. Whether it starts out to be a one-time, one-year position, it says one to two years already. It was initially one. Now it says one to two. So I think there are a lot of things that this person could be doing that is basically a management analyst instead of directly being the sustainability manager.
If I may clarify, I'm not, I'm not clear on the, this is a, a one-year recommendation, and I don't know where the one to two is, is mentioned in there. And each year, the only way that that position would continue is if the council approved it in the future and if we had the, the funds and it was the council's priority to continue such a limited-term position.
I did read 530 pages tonight, so I assume it's in here somewhere. Mike?
I do understand and, and support having some sort of sustainability person. However, I am very concerned given, one, we have had a general policy of one-time money not to be used for what could be an ongoing expense. And this could become an ongoing expense because it's a lot easier to say no to a position now than if all of a sudden Joe or Mary comes in and we're next year making budget decisions and we're actually laying people off, okay? Or not people, but a person off. Also looking at the staffing comparisons and, you know, what are, planning's down 15%. Police, now there was an explanation for police, but they're down 40% from comparable cities. Building and planning and building, 15% and then 30%. I just think, you know, I mean, we've, we've had it somebody, I've gotten an email from a potential business owner that has taken him a year to get a, a business license or a building permit to do the work in his restaurant to open, and now he's facing this six to nine-month wait with PG&E. So it's almost two years for a guy. Now, the PG&E part is beyond our control and we're doing what we can for him there. But for, you know, a year to get a permit for, to open a business when we want to try to encourage businesses is kind of frustrating because this isn't like one, one-off. It seems to be fairly consistent. And again, getting back to the marijuana, I mean, it just seems to take forever to get a marijuana dispensary opened. I have no idea that, we just passed that ordinance and we're past the 30 days when that newest dispensary is gonna be open. I certainly hope it opens soon so we can start getting revenue, so we can be talking about something else. So I'm, I'm reluctant to add staff when we have a $900,000 deficit out of one-time funds, which we have previously had a policy that one-time funds weren't supposed to, were to be used for one-time expenses. And I mean, there is a tendency, once a position's created, it tends to stay there. And so it, I've just, because we never know when ERAF will disappear. The state budget takes a hit, they're gonna cut schools, therefore our ERAF money's gonna go down. It's a domino effect. So I'm very leery and concerned about funding a new personnel expense in, when we have a deficit of 900,000. So, and again, I, I've already made my case in terms of extending the, lengthening the payback period for the wastewater transfer funds we did, what was it, four or five years ago? And, you know, because I felt we made a promise to the citizens of Pacifica that this would be paid off in five years. Now we're extending it another two years. I got a phone call from somebody this, today, why are you doing this? That's not what you said you would do. This is exactly what everybody told you would be happening at the podium when, when we first authorized that. I understand the rationale and where Lorenzo's coming from, and it certainly makes sense, but I just feel we had to, we made a promise to the citizens that this would be paid back. And yes, we will pay it back, but it was supposed to be paid back in the two years. Now we're extending it to five years. So I'm very concerned about that also, so.
Deirdre?
So I just want to get this right, that you're both saying that you are questioning hiring somebody to help out with one of our top 10 council goals. How do you expect to get the things done that we have already approved? The pack it in, pack it out, the litter stuff, the climate action plan? We haven't had a climate action plan update in a year and a half, might even be more. Only reason I know it is because I ask about it and I'm involved. And climate adaptation is number one, it's in the news every single day. How do you expect us to get one of our top 10 goals done without that 100 and, what is it, $25,000? That's nothing. That is nothing. It's a drop in the bucket compared to everything else that we're approving this evening. And I, I just, I'm taking, I'm taking serious offense on a personal and a professional level that I'm sitting here having to try to convince you both that this is real and that we have to do something every bleepin' day. And, and you should be ashamed of yourself for even saying that.
Just because we disagree.
No, it's because, it's because you're not willing to put your money where your mouth is and back up your top 10 council goals with 125 frickin' thousand dollars.
I think the num, one of the top council goals is economic development and getting income.
I agree with you, but it can't happen in a silo. It all has to happen simultaneously, just like we have, the, the issue is homelessness, housing. We've got all these other things happening at the same time. We've got to do it all at the same time. So if 125,000 for one year is gonna get us, you know, some of that input, let's just do it, man. I, I don't, I don't understand why I have to convince people the climate stuff is important.
It is important. We discuss it every single week.
That's not important to you.
Don't tell me what-
It doesn't sound like it.
It doesn't matter what you think, that I'm thinking-
I think I'm up here because you guys elected me.
No, you're, you're, so I got elected too and-
So it does matter what I think.
But don't tell me, don't put words in my mouth about something that you're thinking about-
You said it, not me.
-in your head. So I said, one of our top items is housing. What is the climate action? Does that, does that help our housing? Does that help our economic development?
Yes, it's all related.
Does that help getting our marijuana dispensaries open so we actually have the money so that we can pay these people when we have this deficit? Yeah, I have, I have issues. What about our general plan? How long has it been since we upgraded our general plan? One and a half years for our climate action plan, and our general plan hasn't been updated since 1988. I worked very hard on the general plan committees to try to get that approved.
So I think I'm having a hard time understanding what, what that has to do with, with the, with the position that we're talking about, like, because it doesn't, it doesn't seem like this position is gonna detour from any of the other things that are going on, right? It's gonna free up staff so that they can do more work, so that this work over here on sustainability can be done, and then more work can be done by our staff because it's freeing them up. And so that's what I'm seeing, and I think it's incredibly important that we're able to continue to look at sustainability and look at our climate action plan. And it's only for a, a certain amount of time, right? It's for a one-year limited-term position. Whether there's a tendency for things to turn into more than that, that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're just talking about this limited-term, one-year position, and then we can see what happens and then review it again. That's all I'm seeing.
Thank you for your clarity.
In looking at the job description here, it's on page, whatever it's-
523?
523, yeah. Okay. So you have the Prepare the Climate Action Plan Annual Report, okay? That is done and, I mean, I admit it's been several years, I think, since the climate action plan's been updated. And it research and implementation of the climate action plan, engage the business community in general, sustainability efforts and plasticware compliance. I asked, I called up Chris Porter and she told me that 100% of our businesses are already active in the recycling and composting program. So I don't see how it can get any better than that. 100%.
No, this is, this is sustainability and plasticware compliance that we just passed in October of last year. Chris Porter has nothing to do with that. We, we have, we still haven't even done our marketing yet for our new plastic bin. We, we're still working on it. So that's what that is.
Okay. All I can go by is information I was given by Chris Porter, where 100% of our businesses are involved in the recycling and of recology and the composting problem, composting with recology. So it seems like, that seems to be fairly successful. Okay, I, you can laugh at it and whatever, that's why-
I'm just saying, you asked the wrong question and I gave you the right answer to the right question. The next, the next couple of questions may address that, but not, not that one.
I could say, I asked the right question, you gave me the wrong answer, so let's just continue down that path. Okay. Coordinate PC, PG&E water district rebates. They can all do that themselves. I mean, they're, the water district has their budget, et cetera. Sustain, promote sustainability in-house for government operations, initiate program and monitor examples, include green purchasing policy, recycling and composting, energy efficiency measures. A lot of that is already being handled by recology with their, with recycling, composting, energy efficiency, it'll be handled by PG&E through their rebates, et cetera. Biking and walking initiatives, I think we just got a grant for that, didn't we? For bicycle plan?
For a plan. That's it. Just a plan. That's all it gets us.
And then service delays on the transit agencies on relevant programs to promote transit use and reduce emissions. That's something that we probably could use because I have to admit, the flex bus does not seem to, you know, be full when you see it. However, a lot of that, I think, has to do with the very fact, it's scheduled. It does not run on weekends, doesn't go to the north ends of town. Coordinate the design and implementation of the Pack It In and Pack It Out pilot campaign. You know, I just don't know where that would go from. I'm assuming you're speaking of the beach or the parks or whatever. Coordinate the design and implementation with Recology, the waste recycling compost multi-can pilot at two locations in Pacifica. Recology, I believe, could do that. Coordinate the design and implementation with Public Works, the street sweeping, no parking, no parking program at high priority locations in the city. Assist with the updating and/or development of administrative policies particularly related to sustainability. I look back here and you look at our staffing analysis for the various departments and we are understaffed in every one of them, and I actually think we, you know, we are gonna be having some tough times where this same money could be put into the 115 trust for a future date.
I think we just wasted 125,000 talking about this for the last 20 minutes in this room, right here. And I could address every single one of those issues, and in a year from now, not one of those probably will be touched if you do not hire this person. And that's on you. And I will talk about that until my face is blue to the community.
No one is saying that they don't care about sustainability.
You are, you totally are, and we approved every single one of these. Pack It In, Pack It Out, as a council, we approved it.
That's right.
We approved, we approved, uh, uh, the design, the Pack It In, Pack It Out, we approved the design and pilot with Recology of the waste recycling compost, we approved that. We approved general sustainability of this plasticware, we approved that as a council. Do, I mean, are you guys forgetting this?
So yes, we did approve those items.
At, at Police Department and went over this and said that, actually, two years ago, climate action was number two on our list, and us three were there. Then last year, it was top five. This year, it became the top 10. It's becoming less and less. Where, where, what planet are we living on that I have to convince you guys? That 125,000 is nothing. And it's, like, you may not have little kids, but I do, and I give a huge amount to this, and that's why I'm here. That's all I'll say.
I, I think it might be really important for us to learn more about the position, perhaps, and like what it can add to, you know, the quality of our community. Maybe we just need a little more in-depth description about, you see what I'm trying to say? Like, how can we clarify everything so that when we discuss it- Like, how can we clarify everything so that when we discuss it, we come from a place of, so I'm new to a council, kind of, right? Six months in, I've never experienced a conversation like this yet, so I'm not feeling very comfortable about it, because I feel like we can talk to each other and then decide what's best, and it's obvious from our discussion tonight that two of us really feel this is important, and two of us are questioning it, which is fine, because that's what we're supposed to be doing as a council, because we all come from different places. So I'm not sure where we can take it from here. What do you think?
Well, staff wanted this as, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say staff wanted this as a discussion, they got it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I can elaborate on any of these tasks that would make up what this person would do. And many of these types of tasks, I've done in a former life, as the council knows, I got my, my start in local government, working on this type of environmental coordination. So I know intimately the amount of time that it takes to research, design, develop, and implement a, what seemingly to the public would be a simple litter collection program, but it's extremely time-consuming on the staff end to do that. And to court, to coordinate with recology, our franchise hauler, which is Public Works going to service, which is recology going to service, to strike those agreements. And any of these bullet items here, I could really discuss more. I put, put this scope together as the general scope of things that, we have a lot of work to do on just these bullets, if we're going to fulfill the council's priorities this year, in addition, in addition to doing all of the other council priorities, you know, the whole list, the whole list of 20 major projects. And again, going back to, we just had a conversation about how Assistant City Manager Hines really needs to dig into some of the financials this summer, on our fund balances and on how we're going to use money appropriately for the 115 trust, and there's different bond refinancings, et cetera, that need to happen. And it's difficult for him to carve out the time to do that if he has to also design the promotional materials for the plastic utensils ban, and, which he oversees. A lot of cities have solid waste program managers and coordinators that work with their franchise hauler to make these things happen. We don't have that luxury. And so Mr. Hines, and as well as other staff combined, work together to make all these happen. And I'll remind the council that part of this recommendation is that, you know, my goal, my, my purpose is to bring to you, in the budget, a way that we can achieve all of the council's priorities for the year. And part of that design this year is this added resource capacity. And as the memo says, if the council were to not approve this position, that's fine, we will just make slower progress on all of the council goals throughout the year. And we'll get every, we'll get, make progress on everything, but it'll just be a little slower if we didn't have this added resource capacity. Last year, the council approved a limited-term staff position in planning for a two-year period, and that limited-term person has added incredible capacity to the planning department to really focus on our housing dialogue that's been happening and a lot of other planning resource assistance and public engagement capacity that'll benefit the local coastal plan update, the general plan update, and the specific plan. So it's a really, it's a, I mean, limited-term staffing usage is a proven strategy to move the ball forward in a financially constrained context, and that's what's driving, driving this here. And, and so if there's any other questions about sort of specific aspects of this scope of work, I'm happy to answer those. Again, the management analyst job description, that's just the classification, that's the level of employee that's needed, that has the analytic expertise and the communications expertise and the writing expertise to make these types of programs move forward, and that's why it's recommended at that level of a position.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And what I was saying was, if we have a person that could help in planning to bring in the income, then we could have various other people to work on these items, which we don't have the income right now. We've been waiting and waiting, we still budget for marijuana income, which we have very, very little marijuana income. So if we had someone who could help with planning to get that moving forward so that we actually had the income to cover some of the expenses of sustainability, which I do understand, and I do think make a difference. I just think that we have a lot of projects, housing, that, these are huge issues. The homeless, the RV situation, there, we have a lot of huge issues that, to me, come before garbage.
Well, I mean, I've said our piece, and it seems to be 2-2 or whatever, so I, so what was it?
It's a discussion item anyway, right now.
This proposed action is to provide direction, we did. It's 2-2, so.
We need to-
I guess what I would, if, if there's any, so in two weeks, we're going to come back with the, with the budget for adoption, and if there's any additional information related to this piece of the budget, I'd like to, that the council would like to consider, I'd like to hear that, and we'll, we'll try to put that together, but this staffing analysis and description of this position was what was requested for this discussion tonight.
Well, it sounds to me like maybe a little more information on the transit part of this position, like reducing emissions and the transit agency and relevant programs to promote transit use. Maybe if there was a little bit more description around that, it might be helpful. So it's, we're not just talking about garbage.
And I can tell you that right now, the liaison to the transit agencies may be someone in planning, but they go directly to the Pacifica Climate Committee. They came and gave us a presentation last week on their, it's called On Demand Now, not Flex anymore.
Okay.
And it's going really well. And so they came right to us. There is no one else. So that's what the Climate Committee's doing right now.
And the Climate Committee is a separate committee, not a Pacifica sanctioned committee, correct?
Yes, that's exactly right, just like the San Mateo County Cannabis Advisory Committee that was just created today. So where are you going to go with this? If you just have, you, I mean, I guess it's Beckmeyer's going to be the, the final decider here? And, and, and there's nothing I can say to convince Sue Botterlos and Mike O'Neill to change their minds this evening, other than I'd really challenge you to think deep inside your heart and your, your psyche, and think about our future, and what are you doing today to promote a sustainable tomorrow? And all these climate reports are real. You know, we hear Bridget Duffy every couple of weeks, and it's real. And I live with this sense of doom and gloom and Armageddon for myself and my children, and everything I do and why I'm here is for this. And I've got no frickin' hope if you guys are saying no. So give me some hope. Tell me something. It can't just be done in a silo. All these other things are super important. I'm with you. Everything that you said, I agree with, everything, Sue. But we got to do something for tomorrow, today. Can't wait on it. That's it.
Do you have the direction you need?
I think we have all the direction we need. We will come back to you in two weeks with the final budget, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, which is the policy for installation of temporary street banners on public property.
While Economic Development Manager Myers- during the conversation and this evening, that this policy is really related to just banners on street posts and doesn't relate to the broader issue of banners and signage throughout the city. So to, to remind the council about that constraint.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, my name is Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. Item 16 on your agenda is the administrative policy for installation of temporary street banners on public property. Street banners are used to promote local events and promotional activities. They provide colorful scenery for tourists and create a positive impression upon visitors and local residents, and they help promote economic development. The proposed policy that we're speaking about tonight is limited to street banners on light poles or any other city pole in the city's right-of-way. Street banners authorized by this proposed policy may be used to promote events that are either a city-sponsored or a city-co-sponsored community event or promotional activity. Street banners may not contain any political references or statements, any religious or obscene references, or any election campaign information. Street banner applications shall be accompanied by a fee for the processing of the application, which will be borne by the applicant. The banner materials and hardware for insta, for installation must conform to city specifications, which can vary depending on which city pole is used, whether it's a light pole or utility pole. Those poles will be approved by Public Works in advance. Applicants shall be responsible for all costs associated with the manufacturing, repair, maintenance, installation, and removal of street banners. Public Works or a vendor approved by Public Works shall be allowed to install or remove the banners with all costs paid by the applicant. So with those recommend, with those bullet points, and our recommendation is to adopt this resolution approving the administrative policy regarding guidelines and procedures for installation of temporary street banners on public property. And if you have any questions, staff is available to answer those at this time. Thank you.
Questions?
Thanks, Thomas. I think it'll be a great addition, especially here on Palmetto. I'm assuming that you looked at surrounding cities' guidelines and took the best stuff from there?
Yes, several surrounding cities.
Right.
In the Bay Area, yes.
Right, thanks.
The staff report really mentions Palmetto, but I know Sharp Park has several of these, but I know some of them are in disrepair. What would be the policies like regarding Sharp Park, since there really isn't a commercial district on Sharp Park Road?
We would use Sharp Park as a, as a model for banners to welcome visitors and residents into the city, since it's a major thoroughfare, thoroughfare that people use to come into the city. So something, if, if, if we put banners on, replace banners, actually, on Sharp Park, because there were banners there before, we would have to investigate whether or not the hardware there is any good and whether we could still use it, which I doubted, because it's been up there for several years and hasn't been maintained. But banners on Sharp Park Road would, would also be an option.
And where else do you, oh, go ahead, please.
No, I would just note that when there is a, a city-sponsored promotional activity, it, there's, it's very broad language, so if the council, just by any formal action, action wants to promote anything on a city pole, you may do so under this banner. So there's no restrictions, really, on what the city council wants to promote on a city pole in the form of a banner.
So say the tree lighting event in Rockaway, which isn't really a totally city-sponsored, there is an in-kind donation there?
Yeah, that's an example of what would be, fall under the definition of city-co-sponsored, because we provide in-kind services to that event.
So yeah, on those poles in Rockaway also, to advertise that ahead.
At this point, Rockaway, Palmetto are the only two really viable and Sharp Park questionable, but there are some. I don't know of any other poles.
And regardless of Sharp Park Road, you know, we need to go through there and remove the old tattered banners and inspect the hardware, replace hardware, and make that a viable location, because it's really a prime entrance gate to the city.
I think nature's removed the banners for you, I think.
Most of them, yes.
And were there banners on Lindemar?
I was going to say-
In the front of Lindemar at one point?
Yeah.
At one point, some time ago. No more questions. I have no cards from the public, so we will bring it back to council for deliberation.
And just to clarify, this is only city banners on poles? This is no revision of sign ordinances or anything like that, right?
No.
Or AYSO banners on fences and youth groups, stuff like that, right? Okay.
This is only related to banners on city poles.
Deirdre?
I don't have anything to say. I was going to make a motion.
If no one else has anything to say.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving administrative policy regarding guidelines and procedures for installation of temporary street banners on public property.
I will second it.
Please vote. And that passes four to zero with one absent. And that concludes our meeting for tonight. We're adjourned.